Twenty twenty four, and I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor John Dees of Cross Point Church forward for the invocation.
Let's just take a moment to be silent before the Lord and take a moment in your heart just to tell him that you love him. If there's anything between you and the Lord right now, anything you need to confess and set aside, just take a moment and talk to him about that. And just take a moment also to say thanks for all of his blessings. And Lord, it's really special for me. It's an honor to be here and to pray here at the city council meeting. And with these servants that are dedicated unto you and to governing and governing well. We thank you for our community. We never ever want to take it for granted. This special place that you have allowed us to be and to live, and Lord, we're very, very thankful for that. So many others around the world have nothing like the blessings we have, and they all come from you, and we know that. And now, Lord, I pray that you would let your grace be upon this meeting, let them conduct business well. And, Lord, we pray that we would seek you and that each of these decision makers here would seek you and your wisdom on how to govern and govern this place. And we thank you, Lord, for this time. Thank you for hearing us, and it's in the master's name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which is in our own nation. And to the people who live in this world. Roll call please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
No.
Fantastic. Next, we have approval of minutes number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen dash charging.
Move to approve.
That's it. Okay, motion seconded by Spears. Any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. We do not have any presentations or awards. We will then move to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please come forward and state your name and the district where you reside. We have one comment card turned in by Jim Chamberlain, so you can come forward first.
Good evening. I'm Jim Chamberlain. I live in District Seven. I'm here tonight as president of Madison Greenways and Trails. I'd like to give you a quick update on our work and also to request full funding in FY twenty-five for the Land Trust of North Alabama. I sent this to you as an email also. MGT is a city-sponsored organization serving on the rec board. We do not currently ask for any funding from the city. However, we do request funding to support our partner, the Land Trust of North Alabama. They provide excellent staff, tools, and infrastructure that help make MGT function. Our understanding is the Land Trust has requested twelve K for FY twenty-five, but in recent years have received only half that amount. We request the city fully fund the amount of twelve K in FY twenty-five. Our justification is in this email that I've sent you, and I'll hit some of the highlights below. I think it's an excellent return on the city's investment. Hope you've noticed, MGT has become very active in the past few years. Previously, we'd worked on Bradford Creek Greenway and expansion of Rainbow Mountain Preserve. And now, in twenty twenty-two, we've revived and we're back up to about two hundred members. We've built a beautiful new six-tenth mile trail in Rainbow Mountain Preserve called Rainbow Trail. Over six hundred plus hours of volunteer effort over eighteen months. I estimate the commercial value of that at least twenty to twenty-five K. The Land Trust designed the trail and provided us with trail building expertise, and we provided most of the labor. It's a, the new trail's a nice entrance to the park from the bottom of the mountain, the only entrance, and allows easy access from hundreds, I could say thousands, of homes in the East Drive area. And we're actually having a ribbon cutting on October thirtieth at ten AM that I'd hope you could attend. And we maintain Rainbow Mountain Preserve in coordination with the Land Trust. We also do the Pride of Madison anti-litter program for the entire preserve, the parking lots and trailheads. We've got a nice partnership with the library. We've given a dozen nature talks there in the past two years. Plus, we've just received a state community services grant of four K to expand the library's nature program. We have Dr. Doug Phillips coming in on October eighth. He's the longtime producer of Discovering Alabama. And in addition, we've led many hikes and so forth. So we have a great thing going with the Land Trust, and we hope you'll support them. We will be, have a booth at the Madison Street Festival on October fifth, and hope you'll stop by and see us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your name and district. See, seeing none, are you coming? Okay.
My heart is broken. That's why I had to leave the council.
Would you state your name and district?
Margie Daly, Carrage District. My heart is broken. That's why I had to walk out of the council the last meeting. You neglected to give a public hearing on selling our employees down the river to Evergreen Consultants. I intend, I attended all meetings, did days of research, and took copious notes on it. Evergreen Consulting from Tallahassee, Florida, not even two years in existence, certified in DEI, reports done with AI, and we paid forty-five thousand plus. Okay, so, you know, I saw this happen in New York thirty years ago, and you're killing Madison, and I see it right before my eyes, and it's heartbreaking. So I want to give an example of exactly what equity is, okay? So say we're gonna hire Renee, and we're gonna pay her eight hundred dollars to dig a hole six by six, okay? So Renee's a hard worker, and she goes out there and she digs that hole, and she deserves the eight hundred. But when pay time comes, the rest of the council and the mayor, we're at a baseball game, enjoying themselves, and the check comes, and Renee gets a hundred because every other person gets a hundred too. It's equity in finances, not equality, okay? Big difference. Now, you're turning the city into LA, Chicago, New York. That's what's going on here. You're dangling a carrot of a big pay bump, and you just signed the employees into a plan of destruction, danger, research and development, and human behavior, and medical experiments because the health insurance goes with this too. There will never be another COLA after this one time of the big payment. And it's gonna cost the taxpayers at least two point eight million because you're taking a two-year plan and you're pushing it in one year, okay? Now, who it benefits? It benefits the current people that are gonna retire in twenty twenty-five, the cronyism hires that happened in October of twenty-three, where two new departments were created. One is called External Officer because it's a no-show job, okay? I really can't believe that you sold our employees down the river to a non-merit-based pay scale with research and development funds coming in for their healthcare plan. They will be in experiments, and they will not have informed consent. Remember the Tuskegee Syphilis Study? They studied the effects of syphilis on black men just to see what happened without penicillin. This is the same kind of thing you're doing to the employees just to get federal funds from research and development.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
I'm gonna go on record and say I don't plan on getting syphilis for voting for this pay raise.
And we will close public comments on that note and move on to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
Good move.
Spears?
Yes. Okay. The Finance Committee has reviewed the regular imperative bills to be paid. On the consent agenda tonight, we have a three-year software license subscription renewal. We've got payments for work for Brownsperry, Burgering and Brownsperry Roundabout. We've got, in the acceptance of two mobility scooters from Mr. Jeff Little to be placed at the Madison Community Center. And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion. That's Spears. Seconded by Powell. Any discussion? Seeing none? Ready for vote? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks for your presentation and reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, and I'll be pretty quick. First, I wanna, yesterday was the last home game for our Trash Pandas this year. And I just want to go on record to thank them for Ball Corp, the Trash Panda team, for everything they did this year. Every time I went to a game, I mean, it's just constantly something happening. They work really hard during the day. They have plenty of non-baseball events. And I think we'll get the numbers down the road and see where we are, but they did a great job. I really appreciate them. Couple emails came in just in the last couple of days, both for police, Public Works. We continue to get these. I'm very appreciative of our public letting us know that, you know, a couple of different interactions with our police department, which I'm very appreciative of. And then, leading into, and if you guys could pull up one of the three fixtures, going back to Public Works, they helped us a lot. But this was yesterday morning, about nine o'clock, at Sunshine Oaks in the parking lot. We had been given, hey, guys, there's ninety players coming, plus a lot of stuff happening. If we can get the parking lot done by the tournament, it'd be great. They got it done to the point where we could get everybody on there, and it was packed at, around at eight-thirty, they had, so that was ninety disc golfers on that course at eight-thirty, and at one o'clock, their families. The playground was packed, the greenway was packed. There's a bunch of folks in there, some of the players. If you look over to the far right-hand side, you can see somebody kind of in a yellow jumpsuit with purple. That, he dressed as Buzz Lightyear and played the entire round that way. And I found out that the tournament before, he dressed as Santa Claus. But my fights, that I actually played, didn't play well, but I played, had someone from Gardendale, someone, there they are right there. So Gardendale, Gunnersville, the guy in the green hat comes from Texas. He moved here because his, and he said because his kids were here, and then his grandkids were here, just like we talked about, so he followed his grandkids. So just a really good time out there, but I want to thank Public Works, Facilities and Grounds, Recreation, Steve Smith, Engineering, I could just go on. They've all worked really hard on this, and the culmination, just seeing everything yesterday, just made my heart happy with how many people were getting to enjoy that entire thing. And so with that said, that's all I have, Ms. Renee.
Thank you. District one?
Yes, ma'am. First, I have for your consideration Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three oh four dash R. And this is to use seventy, not to exceed seventy-seven hundred dollars to make the door going from the main part of the library into the children's library ADA accessible. That door is two very heavy glass doors, and what we'll do is we'll put one of those power buttons to the side so that people that are in a wheelchair or have mobility issues, or mothers, frequently mothers with strollers will be able to easily push the button and get into the children's portion of the library. So with that, I request approval of resolution, make motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash three oh four dash R.
Second. Okay. Motion, seconded by Spears. Any discussion or questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Thank you.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember, Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the other thing I'd like to remember, mention is that on Wednesday, we'll be remembering a day in our history that none of us will ever forget. I think for our generation, we remember where we were on nine eleven. Our previous generation, my parents remembered where they were when JFK was shot. But we're gonna have a ceremony at Toyota Field at eight AM on Wednesday. Our honor guard is going to present arms. I've been to it every year since I've been in office. We used to have it on Hughes Road, and we wouldn't have many people there. We'd have maybe ten or twelve people there. We're opening it up to Toyota Field. And so in addition to having the opportunity to just remember that time in our history, we're gonna have a memorial stair climb. I'm not sure how many steps it is. I've been to the gym twice on that awful Stairmaster machine, getting myself ready. I think it's a thousand steps. There'll be plenty of EMT people there should anybody need anything. But what I'm looking forward to is just an opportunity to just remember that day, remember the sacrifice that our men and women in the fire department, in the police department, and the EMT services in New York, and in Washington DC, and in Pennsylvania all gave their life as a huge sacrifice. And I would just encourage everyone that can to join me and hopefully a whole bunch of people. Eight AM Toyota Field, there's no charge, free parking, the weather looks great, the steps are very easy, there's railing there. I've, I'm psyching myself up for it, but just want to invite everybody to come and just remember that time and those people, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. District two?
No new business.
Okay, district three?
First of all, I guess congratulations to both of the teams that played in the Jim Bob Bowl or the Madison City Bowl. And congratulations to the winners. I won't mention that because I don't want to get half of my constituents mad at me. And the other thing, I just want to take a quick moment. I normally will not address comments, public comments, but I will address that one. I've been on council for eight years, and the entire eight years, you know, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of assets. We've got a new, new facilities here, new facilities there, got this, we got that. But the most important asset that we have, and have always had, and have always protected, and will always protect as long as I'm on council, is our employees. So to think that, you know, we're giving them syphilis or some weird whatever thing that people come up with is bull crap. So I want to thank the employees that are here. I want to thank those that will hear about this, and, you know, everything you guys do. So that's all I've got.
Okay, district four?
I have one here. I'd like to appoint Megan Zero-Ellie to our city attorney, since Brian Kilgore has left. And I would like to make a motion.
Second. Okay, motion. And a second, any discussion?
I have some comments.
Okay.
I just, I just personally feel that we're doing a disservice to the city because we are not putting this out as an open process. We're not asking others to, to put their name in. We could be, you know, looking at people that have new experience in different municipalities or different perspectives. People that have worked in different areas. There's just so much more out there. And it would just, in my opinion, it would have been nice had we done a full process where a lot of people could have put in their name. And along with Megan, I mean, this is no way against Megan. I just feel that I wish we had done a process that was much more open and looked at different, different people that could also come in and just bring different aspects to the job and bring different talents and perspectives. I think that is important to a healthy city. And Megan would have been great. That would have been, but it's a process that I didn't really agree with on this one. And also, I just have one question. Is it possible for us to hire, have an attorney, but also have an outside firm that would be a lawyer, that would have, you know, the whole broad range of experience? So we don't have to contract out because I know it's in budget. We have to, you know, besides having the in-place attorney to, oh, contracting. Is there a way that we could just have a firm, contact with a firm who would handle everything, maybe have one point of contact? But then you'd have more people, more eyes looking at contracts and that sort of thing. Is that even possible? People have asked me, and I thought, I don't know the answer.
I'm sure any, anything is possible in doing it. I think we're gonna be deferring to Megan to tell us the best way to do it that supports the city. A lot of what you're looking for is expertise in specific areas. One firm may have that, all of that, but they may not. And so we'll take your suggestion into play, but I think in this case, as a city attorney, her responsibility is to take care of the city, and we want to give her the ability to use who she feels like can help us the most.
That's all. Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Anything else from district four?
No, ma'am.
How about district six?
Congratulations, Megan.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like first to talk about the Madison Street Festival. It's coming up October fifth, fourth, fifth, October fifth. It's a Saturday. It has been amazing, the outpouring of people wanting to be here again this year was amazing. We filled up all positions in the food, in the business, in the craft, everything. It was just, it was full very fast. And that's the first time that's ever happened. We're so excited. We're so looking forward to this event. It's always great for those people that haven't ever been here. Madison Street Festival is just a hallmark. It's all about family and coming together as a city. But we do need volunteers. We desperately need like a couple hundred volunteers in order to help make this work. And so if you've got time on that Saturday, it can be a two hours, it could be four hours, just whatever you have. Or if you can come on Friday evening, there's times there that we need help setting up things. So if anybody has time, please just go to the Madison Street Festival website and volunteer and just be a part of it. It's a great, it's a great event. I'd like to put that out there. Also, I met with Madison Visionary Partners. They are in the process of hiring a new executive director. They have somebody that they're really interested in, but not, not time to share that yet. And they did add three new board members to the Board of Directors at their last board meeting. So they really are looking forward to serving the whole city. They really do bring an expertise of finding community money that can be spent within our city for our people. The more I have gotten to know them, I've been working about six months with them now, they are just, it's a wonderful organization. A hundred percent support them. And my last thing is the nine eleven remembrance. I will be there too. I probably won't do the stairs. But it is just a time for us to remember the sacrifice of so many. And I also would just like to put a shout out to our fire department and our police department for all the hard work that they do to protect us now. Y'all are my heroes, always have been. That's all. Thank you.
District Kevin?
None of business.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. First, the council, at the conclusion of the meeting this evening, we'll take a fifteen-minute break and then come back for a work session focused solely on the budget, and we had noticed that. And a number of our council members were able to attend a key communicators meeting with Madison City Schools. And we learned the impact of some of the legislation that passed last year. I thought it was very helpful to understand the financial impact to our schools. And I want to thank our school system for sharing information like that with us. And that's all I have. We do not have any board or committee appointment, so we will move to public hearings. Now, the first four resolutions that are the subject of public hearings are dealing with assessment of weed leavings. We've been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing weed nuisances from these properties, and these reports have been previously sent to the owners of the lots. We're now going to have public hearings on these matters, and so we're gonna take them one at a time. And first, we'd like to begin by asking, is there any owner at eighty-one thirty-five Old Madison Pike here this evening who wishes to address the reports? And is there, I'm gonna go ahead and go through and make sure, is there anyone here from twenty-two Stone Trail here to address the reports? Is there anyone from one eighty Dusty Trail here to address? address the reports? Is there anyone from one eighty Dusty Trail here to address the reports? And is there anyone from three twenty-three Pension Row here to address the reports? Okay. Seeing none, um, we're gonna go ahead and take up each resolution one at a time on the weed lanes on these properties. And we're gonna begin, uh, before we start the hearing, I need to have a motion on the first resolution, number twenty-two four dash two ninety-one R.
Moved to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're going to now open a public hearing on the first weed lane on eighty-one thirty-five Old Madison Pike. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this? And you have five minutes.
Margie Daly, Tarrant's District. I'm gonna just speak on all of them because I feel the same about all of them and I will not take five minutes. What I don't understand is why this city and the whole area have no, um, senior advocates. These people here, this area are more poor people or, you know, they might have a problem. They might have a physical problem not being able to do these weeds. Now, I see Plaza Boulevard, four feet high weeds owned by a developer, it's fine. Portal, same, same difference, owned by a developer, it's fine. I don't see them here. Why are we targeting senior citizens and poor people that have lived here for generations and not targeting the developers? This is where this council and mayor seem to be so unfair to the people that deserve it the most. They deserve help. We should have a senior advocate, somebody that maybe can cut the weeds at a lower price. Instead, we're gonna go after these poor people and make them pay hundreds of dollars, which it probably didn't cost the city hundreds of dollars to do these properties. And, I mean, the people don't even show up. They probably didn't get a notice. Because I noticed that since, uh, Brian Kilgore, did they get public notice on these properties? They, they have? Everyone got a public notice?
Probably multiple.
Probably multiple or definitely multiple. I mean, let's, 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 let's start using facts and not make believe land.
That'd be great. I agree.
Yeah, really.
I'm in with you.
Yeah, like healthcare gets R and D money, research and development.
Ms. Daly has the floor, please continue. You have the floor, please continue. I'm trying to get everyone to let you speak.
Thank you. Anyway, that, that's my problem. We don't try to nip these kinda things in the bud- I would go over there with my mower and mow the lawns rather than charge them nine hundred dollars, honestly. And I'm no spring chicken. And any one of you up there could do it. Especially you, Greg. You got a landscaping business. You could do that for these people. You could help people instead of hurting people by almost a thousand dollars for cutting weeds. And why don't we do it to the developers? Why do they get away with it? 'Cause they're lining people's pockets. Madison City is going to realize the YMCA has go, has gone bankrupt, fifteen point five million dollar over assessed property, okay? And you guys have been doing that all along.
Okay, so this-
Yeah, okay. So, I'm, I'm gonna go now, but just, it's, it's, the cards are starting, the house of cards is going to fall after the YMCA. Just watch.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Daly. If anyone else would like to speak to the property, uh, Old Madison Pike. Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Any discussion with council? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote on resolution number twenty-two four dash two ninety-one dash R. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we are going to take up resolution number twenty-two four dash two ninety-two dash R, twenty-two Stone Street. If there are any members of the public who wishes to address this public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second?
Moved to approve.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion by council?
I do have a question, I guess. It kinda pertains to all of them, is what you brought up. Why is it that the larger tracts of land are not under the same guidelines of having to keep it mowed? I'm asking.
How do you know they're not?
You can judge by many. Okay, I'm just, I'm asking. I mean, some of it looks, you know, fine, but just can you explain the difference between the two?
I, I, I don't think I, when you say there's a difference, I think any of our code enforcement guys working with Dustin, through Dustin, um, go through a process for any property, whether it's commercial or retail, to make sure that we are asked to stay within compliance. These respective properties have not. We followed every process we can with every request and they've gone through multiple processes to get to this point. So, these are the ones that have been brought forward that went all the way through the process and didn't comply. And thus, the city is asking for the, the reimbursement for taking care of it. I can't answer hypotheticals, what ifs about this property or that property because there's a, a long process that gets followed to get to this point. It's not arbitrarily on a Wednesday they say, you know, we're, we're just tired of this, let's be done. There's a long process that goes through here.
That I understand. It's the difference between, I mean, I can see you're in a neighborhood and you wanna keep all neighborhood, you know, grass cut the same so it all looks nice. Is that the difference or is it just, you know, I understand also sometimes rats getting, I mean, field mice and that sort of thing in the larger fields. I, it's a thing. So, I just wonder if there is a really good reason or if it's just the way it is.
Uh, the only good reason I can give you is that these four have been brought all the way through our code en, code enforcement process to be deemed noncompliant at that point.
They usually start with a complaint from a neighbor or whatever, how that all starts, like usually our code enforcement isn't right around.
Oh, I understand that. Yeah, no, I bet.
It usually starts with a complaint and then it goes from there. But everybody goes to the same standard. And a lot of the commercial properties have, have not been annexed in, so they're not ours to, to do either. Uh, uh, not every single one, but a lot are still in the county.
Can I, can I ask a question? Can I ask Megan, we drafted this new ordinance back in the previous council to, to deal with this. If you could walk us through very quickly, what is the process from cradle to grave as to how we work through these and teaming with this and, and going through that? And if you can, as well, help answer what are, you know, how do we calculate the cost-
Okay.
-that are being charged there as well?
Absolutely. So, yes, our ordinance was adopted several years ago and it covers all commercial and residential properties in the city. Um, but like any law that's adopted, it takes enforcement and it takes staff to go out there and recognize issues. And it takes people who are willing to come forward if they have concerns and complaints. And so, you know, our code enforcement staff, it'll consistently monitors and handles and, you know, all complaints from the public. And they also are out there riding the streets every day to notice problems. And so, this is among them. I don't have any awareness of properties that has been reported or have overgrown grass and weeds that have not been addressed because I know that they handle everything that comes their way. If anybody does have a particular property that seems to be a problem that hasn't been addressed, I'll be happy to take a look in coordination with them. But yes, so diving into the process, so there is an extensive process. And it does start with that notice and complaint to code enforcement. And that's, um, whether a code enforcement officer recognizes it him or herself, or whether a citizen calls into the city and reports a concern. After that, a written notice is provide, and citation is provided to the property owner and they're given a first chance to resolve the issue. If they don't, then another notice is sent. And then that property owner is offered a chance to meet with a hearing officer here at the city, which has been the city clerk's office. Is that still how things are working? So, after that, the property owner is given the chance to tell their side of the story and share, you know, why or why not they haven't taken care of their property. You know, sometimes it happens that, you know, people just have left properties and abandoned them. So, nobody shows up. Like, we've had that situation before. Um, but, you know, if there are any problems, they're addressed at that time and they have a chance to share their side of the story. And then, you know, they're supposed to continue to remediate the issue. Then if they don't, then that's when a final notice is sent. And then the code enforcement staff actually hires somebody to do the work. And then at that point, that's when the city can send a notice to recoup those costs because we've invested time, uh, for contractors and city staff to do all of these things. And so, each of, uh, you have before you hearing packets that contain that series of notices. And it also contains an itemized, um, cost and statement of expenses. And so, the one for one of these properties that, you know, includes cost of labor, that was five hundred dollars. You also can charge for things like the value of use of equipment, advertising, and that was not a factor in this one. You have advertising expenses at a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Postage is included in that. Administrative expenses, two hundred forty-seven dollars. And then there were no legal expenses or materials. And so, that, that is the final total that is now offered to all of you, um, for final approval. And then the purpose of this public hearing is for a property owner to come forward and say, hey, you know, really, did you really spend that much on advertising? And, um, were the administrative expenses really that much? And so, that gives you all an opportunity to, you know, to hear them out and then assess the cost so they can be collected with a tax bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or discussions?
I think real quick though, this, you know, a couple of years ago, we had some, a similar thing happen to the AT&T building. And we went through the same exact process and got the building cleaned up, actually got it up to code 'cause there were some code issues. So, that's why it's in place, for safety, safety of the people and, and, you know, to keep our community looking nice. I mean, that's, that's the whole purpose of it. So, I'm saying we don't do it with, with businesses or developers. That's just not true.
Well, it really just takes a person putting forward a complaint.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's just not about looking nice. I've had a couple of complaints come through from my district. And I know of at least one property owner who the next, the resident next door was not taking care of their yard. And they caught twenty-five plus rats in their own yard that had come over from the mess. So, this is why this happens. It is a public health issue and a public safety issue. Not only this doesn't look good. If you live next door to somebody who is not taking care of their yard and rats take up residence, then snakes come behind. And children are playing out in the yard and it becomes a real big, huge issue. And I've had a few residents since I've been on council that have contacted me about this and said, look, this is dangerous and it's scary. My kids can't play in the yard. And it's because these people aren't taking care of their yard. And so, code enforcement has come out and they have resolved the issue. Now, it takes time. It doesn't happen, you don't complain today and it happens tomorrow. There is a period of time that they have to resolve the issue. And I get called back from those residents saying, what's taking so long? I'm like, there is a legal process we have to go through. But it is not just about your weeds are too high. It's about what happens when your weeds get too high and how it can affect other people.
I, I've had some citizens also and they have complaints. And yes, we've worked through it and that sort of thing. In fact, I called Dustin today to thank him so much for his hard work and everything like that. It's not a matter of not understanding this. It's the difference between, say, just all these empty lots that we have that do stand open and now we found out. It's just a matter of somebody giving enough complaint. If there really is varmints living in there, whatever, then that would be addressed. But just the fact that no one's done anything, that's why nothing has changed. That's what I'm understanding from this conversation. Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Megan. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a vote on twenty-two four dash two ninety-two dash R? We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we're going to open public hearings for resolution number twenty-two four dash two ninety-three dash R, one eighty Dusty Trail. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this issue?
Margie Daly, Tarrant's District. You know, I just want the city to be fair. You are not fair. I have complained about Portal for months and Plaza. Last year, I complained about it and complained about it. And then finally, the guy took a helicopter, put a John Deere on it at the end of the season and mowed. Okay? It came in by helicopter. There are rats in my neighborhood between this development over here, my neighbor who has weeds growing thirty feet high, Portal Lane. So, no, it's not fair. Nobody, you know, the developers get away with everything, the owners, the, you know, they get away with everything and the poor people get, uh, uh, nine hundred dollars for weeds. Like I said, I will volunteer before you guys throw these fines on to do it myself.
Would you be willing to sign up for that right now?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, absolutely.
Let's draft up a, let's draft up a legal contract.
I think Ray George should do it 'cause he makes so much money on, excuse me.
Let's, let's draft up a legal contract.
Let's not get crazy. I'm, I'm a disabled senior citizen.
Would you be willing to volunteer?
And I would help people, but I am not gonna sign a contract with anyone in this council. Because you guys do stuff-
Right.
...that is federally embezzling money.
Really?
With the research and development fund.
Okay, we have gone far afield with this particular public hearing. Could you focus your comments on one eighty Dusty Trail?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I would be willing to help people if a volunteer. I will not sign a le, legal contract with Mr. Seaford now. Uh, but I would be willing to help people. And I would suggest the city maybe, uh, reach out to, uh, people that, you know, are not looking to make a gazillion dollars and they just have a little lawn company. I know one of them that'll do them for half price for senior citizens. And he offered that to the people, not to the city, because we don't wanna sign a contract, you know? We'll be put into that research and development category.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Daly. Can I have a, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Can I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Okay, motion second. Any questions, any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution number twenty-two four dash two ninety-four dash R on property three twenty-three Pension Row, opening public hearings. Is there anyone who'd like to address this issue? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Can I have a motion and a second?
Moved to approve, second.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Shaw, any questions, any comments? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. And finally, we have one public hearing for resolution number twenty-two four dash three zero one dash R. Move on.
Good evening. We have, uh, one item for this evening. This is resolution number twenty-two four dash three oh one dash R. This is a request for a restaurant retail liquor license from Entice Bar and Grill LLC, doing business of Entice Bar and Grill. They are located at eighty-six ninety-four Madison Boulevard, Suite J. Um, the reason that this business is applying for a restaurant retail liquor license at this time is because it's a new business in the city of Madison. And everything is, uh, in order for this item to be considered.
Okay, do we have owners of the property here?
They are here. If you guys have any questions.
If we need them, okay. We're going to open public hearing on this item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Can I have a motion and a second?
Moved to approve, second.
Okay, motion by Shaw, second by Roblesky. Um, any questions, any comments by council?
Thank you for your investment in Madison. Welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, department reports beginning with building.
Good evening. I got proposed ordinance, twenty-two four two seventy-six. This is a amendment in the city of Madison Code Ordinance. It's added in chapter twenty-four, article one, section eleven, uh, for unintended receivables. And that's these donation boxes that we're trying to get more leverage to remove. It's not allowed.
Moved to approve, second.
Councilmember Powell, Councilmember Roblesky, any questions, any comments?
Thank you.
We had a first reading on eight twenty-six. Any comments? Did you receive anything from the public?
Or see anything else? No.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dustin.
And I was gonna say, on the, uh, the tall grass and weeds, if y'all got complaints, just send them to me or send them to code enforcement, and we'll definitely check them out. I mean, I mean, residential, commercial, no matter what it is. I mean, you know, we, we take care of all of them, so just let us know.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Before you have proposed ordinance number 2024-277, this is just an amendment, the municipal court schedule of fines to include the new distracted driving law down from Montgomery. This is not making that first time offense like that ordinance we proposed previously. This is just Montgomery changed the laws, so we're updating the schedule of fines accordingly.
Move to approve, second.
Motion, Mr. Roblesky, second by Shaw. Any questions?
I just have one question. What exactly is distracting drivers?
Um, in this case, it's a secondary violation where if they saw that you were unable to maintain your lane, or that you ran through a stop sign, you committed some other type of traffic infraction, and the officer saw that you had like a handheld device in your hand or something, then not only could they fine you for the traffic violation, but just like the seatbelt ticket, they could also add this on as a second charge to it as well. So it's another violation where they have an additional fine with it.
So it's actually holding something in your hand as opposed to eating or drinking? I mean, what, what is called distraction? Just so that people are aware.
Sure. Yeah, it is, it has to be a handheld telecommunications device. It does say other devices, but I don't think it would go so far as like a, a hamburger. It'd be more like a tablet or a laptop would include as well. There's a section for cell phones or, you know, any type of phone device specifically, and then there's kind of a catch-all for other types of electronic devices, too, like a, a tablet or something like that. An iPad would count, all that would, too. So, and there's, you know, exceptions for police officers that are doing their duties with it and stuff like that, of course, so.
Yeah, of course. Okay, just thank you for explaining. It seemed rather vague.
Yeah, and if you get more questions, I can, I can show you the whole code if you'd like to see it. And if anybody has questions to you about it, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks, Tim.
Okay, uh, first time I have Resolution Number 2024-267-R authorizing conveyance of approximately two hundred, two thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet of property for right-of-way acquisition from Felicia Regina Jones Johnson from, for the Massey Road, Seeger's Road Intersection Improvement Project, uh, five thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Move to approve, second.
Motion, Mr. Powell, second by Spears. Any questions? Seeing none, ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 2024-299-R, authorizing change order number one to the contract with Grayson Carter &amp; Son Contracting for Project 22036, Central Brown Street Road, Burgery Road Roundabout. Uh, this is to add the three hundred linear feet of steel casing, uh, for the potential future MU water main extension. They could go in that area. Uh, the change order is one hundred eighty thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and forty cents to be paid from Fund Thirty-Eight. Uh, if you remember, two weeks ago, we talked about how Madison Utilities is going to participate, uh, in some of this cost. They're gonna, they're gonna, uh, put up sixty thousand of this, as well as the cost of the pipe to have it, uh, brought in, delivered to the site.
Move to approve, second.
Motion, second. You mean sixty thousand of the one eighty?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions? All right, just-
Thank you for explaining it.
Pardon?
Thank you for explaining-
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Okay, this next one is proposed ordinance number 2024-030, uh, vacation of utility and drainage easement located within Lot Two B of the Madison Town Center subdivision. Uh, this is the first reading, so this is over here next to the Dollar General, uh, where they're building the new mini storage facility. As you can see on the map, the drainage easement that's being vacated is towards the very top of that, this weird shaped area. It was established, uh, by plat, I believe, in two thousand and six, uh, the last subdivision of this. Uh, but, but the purpose of this, uh, proposed, proposed ordinance is to vacate that easement.
And this is just the first reading?
That's correct.
Okay, let's go next.
All right, next is Resolution Number 2024-300-R, uh, authorizing acceptance of a public utility and drainage easement located within Lot Two B of Madison Town Center subdivision. So this is the same, same lot, and they're basically just changing the shape of it. Um, going back, I couldn't find why it was put in the weird shape that it was put in to begin with, but this is where they're gonna sit their pond for that facility, uh, if it's within the bounds of these easements. And so we're asking for approval of this resolution to establish this easement, that I guess will go into effect in two weeks when we do the second reading of the vacation of the easement in the same area.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions? Ready for a vote? Motion, second. Roblesky, thank you. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Facilities and grounds.
We have two resolutions to present to you now. First one is Resolution 2024-273-R, authorizing the mayor to amend an existing professional service agreement with the Mary Engineering Corporation to provide supplemental subsurface exploration and geotechnical report to include rock coring as proposed outfield building in Toyota Field for a price of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars to be paid from the multi-use venue fund.
Move to approve.
Okay. Uh, couple of seconds. Uh, Maureen, is it you or Connie? Okay, sorry. Greg, Connie. All right, questions?
Can you give a little explanation of what that's gonna do for us, please?
So, uh, we, we've gotta do some more boring under the proposed where we would put that building. And we've got twenty-five more borings that we gotta bring a track drill to do because of the foundation to support if we build the full story. Whether we build this base building or the full story, we still gotta put the foundation in. Because of the material that's in the ground now, we've gotta go deeper to see where the rock bed is located. So there's a very good possibility we're gonna put piers or pilings in to support that, but we don't know that until we do these borings and see what, how far the rock bed is down.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, I had one. Since we might have other questions. Uh, so is this to support if it's a four-story or if it's just the regular clubhouse?
It was my understanding, when we started the project, we wanted to build the foundation that would support up to a four-story building. If, if you don't do that now, there's no, even if you just built a base building, you couldn't build on top of it unless you put this foundation in the ground to start with.
But is it true that you need to find out with these borings, even for the one-story building?
That's right.
What we can do? So it doesn't, yeah, so, okay.
E- either way, we still gotta do the borings to know what we gotta put in the ground.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
All right, next resolution is 2024-307-R, authorizing amendment to, uh, number two to the professional service agreement with Gilbert, McLaughlin, Casilla Architects for professional services needs to provide early release package demolition and excavation at Toyota Field for a price of thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars. It also be paid from mo- multi-use venue maintenance fund.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, motion, second. Any questions?
What exactly is it?
So this would be the drawing package for doing the demo work to get ready to, to build whichever package that we go forward with. So there are irrigation lines, water lines, concrete steps, retaining walls, it all has to be demoed in order to just get low enough to build the building back up. So this is just that part to keep the project moving forward until we get final pricing and get approval for construction drawings.
So it says amendment, it's just because this is the next step as opposed to adding to what existed before?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
HR.
Favorite person. Nope. Nope. Nope, we got one after you, sorry.
She can still be.
Nope. Not gonna happen.
[laughing]
Good evening again. And first of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to serve the city as city attorney again. I'm very grateful and very excited for the work that we're all gonna be doing together. So, um, just give me a call if you'd like to meet or talk about anything on illegal fraud, including grass and weeds. So I look forward to this. Um, on the HR front, I would like to present to you ordinance number 2024-241 for a second reading. This is an ordinance to amend Section Twelve, compensation and benefits of the city's personnel policies and procedures. If adopted, this ordinance will enact the policy recommendations of Evergreen Solutions, including providing new boundaries for the pay scale, assuring employees that their pay is competitive and fair in our municipal job market. It will also provide assurances of annual step and collet increases, and it will resolve a great deal of pay compression in the city service. This ordinance also authorizes an appeals process for employees who have questions about why their salaries may or may not be adjusted, and so we will work with them on any resolutions to resolve inaccuracies if we, if we identify them during this process. I would like to point out one particular section of this ordinance, and that is Section Five. This ordinance is not one of Evergreen's policy recommendations. This was an HR enhancement to the overall package, and this is a proposal to add an additional two and a half percent to the salaries of employees, and there are, which affects about twenty to twenty-two percent of our workforce, um, who are already at market. So this cur- this particular provision is not currently supported in the budget proposal that's before you, and I wanted to cue that up in case you would like to offer an amendment to this ordinance to remove this particular section and allow more discussion to occur during the budget process.
Move to approve.
I would like to move-
Wait a second. We first have to get a motion on this, on the actual first reading motion before we can take an amendment, okay? So first need a motion and a second.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, you have a second. Now, we've got the main that has been read and publicized.
Right.
Now, do you have an amendment?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment to remove Provision Five, so that we can discuss it during the work session and address it at a later date.
Okay.
Can, can we decide that later date rather than it being a, can it be on the next council meeting, just so that we're not pushing it out into the netherland?
We have to pass the budget.
Okay.
It's gonna-
It'll be in the budget, on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion to amend to remove Section Five as printed in the first reading, and you seconded the amendment. So we need to have discussion on the amendment. Is there any, is there any discussion questions for Megan? We have to pass the amendment in order to then pass the regular. So, ready to vote on amendment?
Yes.
All right. All right, and then we'll discuss further raises at the budget work session and the ultimate-
Perfect.
-budget vote. Okay, voting on the amendment to remove Section five of ordinance Number 2024-241. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
All right, the amendment passes. Now that becomes proposed ordinance Number 2024-241. So are we ready to vote on the entire?
So I'd just make sure a couple of things, um, so where they talked about two years of bringing this in play, the city will bring this in in the first year altogether as one. Um, and again, it will be for the currently filled positions, the currently approved in the budget but unfilled positions, and then whatever the council would decide is the new positions that would come in. And that will be part of the budget process, which right now, you know, but that's, that's what we have. Everybody would be added in as they presented it. And again, um, based on the longevity and the job ti- um, the qualifications that they have based on the study that was done with thirteen other folks. They had nothing to do with anything else other than looking at what a normal building inspector and a building inspector would be in Franklin, Tennessee, Madison, Alabama, Huntsville, Alabama, and finding the low, medium, and high. And that's what we're implementing with their longevity.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I am just thrilled that we are doing this for our employees. I think it is long overdue that we, um, bring up the pay for our employees. I think they work so hard, and I completely support that part. I do just have the one question, though, pertaining to the call is, how does that work in the future?
Sure. There's a new provision in the city's personnel policies to take the inflation data that's published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics and use that number. So we'll just be taking national data and applying it to the city pay scale. And then if we get in a situation where there's extreme inflation, you still have, you know, council can still review those numbers and cap that amount for any given year, depending on how that affects the budget.
Okay, so there always will be COLAs some sort?
Yes.
Those steps are still in place. COLAs, as always, you will use national data, but are optional.
No, they were-
Optional at the level.[1613.12]